It is six o'clock, so it is my pleasure to call the February 23rd meeting of the Tarrant County College District Board of Trustees to order. And we have a guest who would like to make a comment, Kenneth Cortez.
Hello, my name is Kenneth Cortez and thank you for the opportunity to express my thoughts here today. First off, I just want to let everyone know that I am proud to be a student and staff member of TCC. I consider the Northwest Campus a second home and I've always felt comfortable and safe there. Recently, two articles were published in the Collegia newspaper that for the first time made me question TCC's commitment to its goals on inclusivity. Being born to two immigrant parents from Mexico, I've always been aware from a very early age of the struggles that face the immigrant community. Of late, more and more tension is being felt on the college campus in regards to race, language, and immigrant status. The article clearly states that they will, that TCC will follow the letter of the law, and I absolutely agree that the law should be followed. However, in our current political climate, I am saddened that TCC has chosen to keep the status quo and not identify as a sanctuary school. Regardless of only being symbolic, it would express TCC's respect and willingness to foster education in students of all backgrounds. The second, more disturbing article was TCC's hesitation in blacklisting the hateful site Breitbart from advertising its services. If there's any question as to the moral nature of this site, one only has to look at Breitbart's headline splashed across the article. Gay riots have made us dumber and it's time to get back in the closet. According to TCC, one of its goals is to create an inclusive and productive learning environment. As a gay man, I absolutely feel that choosing to allow ed revenue to flow into hateful sites such as this is TCC's passive acceptance of their views. TCC Executive Communications and Public Relations Director Suzanne Groves' slippery slope comment about this being the new world of advertising rings more like an excuse than a defense. It is my hope that TCC will reevaluate their stance on these issues and stand for more inclusivity and less intolerance. Thank you.
Kenneth, thank you for your thoughts. We appreciate you being with us tonight.
Thank you very much.
Item number three, board action items, the approval of the minutes of the meeting of January 19th, 2017. Motion to approve, please. Mr. Heed?
Second.
Second, Mr. Greenhill. Any comments, additions, or corrections? If not, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Two items on the consent agenda, consideration and approval of proposed revisions to policies BGC local and DEC local, and consideration and approval of proposed changes to DBA local and DEA local. Motion to approve the consent agenda? Mr. Carter, second. Dr. Morrison. Any comments, questions? All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, presentations on student access and success in administrative programs and projects, South Campus Active Learning on TCC South. Dr. Jordan?
Good evening Chancellor Giavignini, President Appleman, members of the board. This evening, it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Dana Grove, who is Vice President for Academic Affairs on South Campus. Together with Professor Ravello and Professor Ravello's students, they're going to talk to us, discuss why we get involved with active learning on South Campus and across TCC. And they will demonstrate how we're doing it as well in terms of one example that Professor Ravello will bring to us. So it gives me pleasure to introduce Dr. Dana Grove.
Thank you, Dr. Jordan, and good evening trustees. I appreciate the opportunity to speak about my favorite topic, which is active learning, and in particular, active learning on the South Campus. The modern college system began about 1,000 years ago in medieval Europe, and this is a contemporary painting in about 1350 of a college classroom. And you'll notice here you have the sage professor up front on some kind of a podium, a stage if you will, and he's reading some heavy tome down to his students, and they are in tidy militaristic rows at various stages of engagement. You'll see the eager beavers are on the first row there. They're taking down every word that the sage professor says. The farther you get back, you can see the students are talking to one another, they're starting to doze off. And this fellow in particular here, the second to the last row, the very right, what's he doing? I think he's texting. Isn't he texting there? Yes. Oh, those ornery students. Now I'm going to jump up a number of centuries here and take us back to the venerable one-room schoolhouse. Of course, this isn't higher education, but we see some technological innovations. We have a globe on the desk. We also have what looks like centralized heating in the very center of the classroom there. And we have the school marm who sits at the front of the room as she speaks down to her students who are neat, tidy militaristic rows at various stages of engagement. And finally, we have the modern classroom. We have a high degree of instructional technology there. We got projectors, we have whiteboards. We have the teacher who is in the front of the room, speaking down to his students who are neat, tidy militaristic rows at various stages of engagement. I think you can see the theme of what I'm talking about here. In 1,000 years, how has the infrastructure and the pedagogy of education changed? It hasn't very much. I guess that's because it's working. It must be working perfectly, otherwise we would have changed it long ago. Modern research indicates that people retain 5% of what they hear and 20% of what they read. So in a lecture format classroom, students who are reading the text supposedly outside of class and coming in and getting the lecture from the professor are retaining 25% of the material. However, the same research concludes that when students are actively involved in learning the material themselves, they retain 75% of the material, three times more than in the lecture format. Wouldn't it be great, trustees, if we could engage our students actively in the classroom? I came here, maybe you remember, it was last June that I came to the college, and I vowed, and I think I vowed, Dr. Jordan, to you during my interview, that one of the things, first things I was going to do was to sit down with all 133 of our full-time faculty and talk with them in their offices. Just an opportunity for us to get to know one another, and I'm glad to say here that I have spoken with all 133 faculty. One of the things I intentionally asked each one of the faculty members was, "How would you characterize your teaching style?" And to borrow a phrase from President Jordan, I'm glad to say that I am button-poppingly proud to say that most of our faculty members actively engage their students in learning. Now, what do I mean by active learning? Here's a list of, just a short list of active learning strategies. It is by no means exhaustive. A teacher is only limited by his or her creativity and imagination and coming up with ways to actively engage students. It can be as simple as engaging in a Socratic dialogue with your students, where every question's followed by an answer and followed by another question, and so on, until you get to the very core of the issue. Cooperative collaborative classes, just a fancy term for group work. And again, research indicates that students teach each other and teach themselves better than teachers teach them. Think about that one. That's an interesting one. We have supplemental instruction, which this district is dedicated to, learning communities and such. The flip classrooms is something that's just happened relatively recently. In a traditional classroom, the teacher presents the material in class, the students go out, go home, and do their homework and bring it back in. In a flip classroom, it's just the opposite. The students access a video made by the professor introducing the material, and they do their homework in class, facilitating each other and being facilitated by the teacher as well. And this is particularly effective in math classes. When I was an academic vice president up north, I used to get into this periodic discussion with one of the department chairs. And he would say, "Dana, you can poo-poo the lecture format all you want, but it's the most efficient way of disseminating the most amount of information to the most number of people in the shortest period of time." And I would look him right in the eye and I'd say, "Victor, you're absolutely correct. I agree with you 100%. It is the most efficient way of disseminating the most amount of information to the most number of people in the shortest period of time. But what does that say about the continual improvement of student learning? What does that say about what students learn?" Nothing, absolutely nothing. And I think that characterizes the difference between the passive lecture format and active learning. The passive lecture format is teacher-centered. The active learning format is student-centered. Or even more exactly, student learning standard. Getting the students to learn is the most important thing. At this time, I'd like to introduce one of the 133 faculty members that I talked to, Mr. Carlos Ravello, who teaches both government and art history. It's an interesting combination, is it not? And he's going to talk about some of the active learning projects he does with his students, and he'll invite his students to speak also. I will then return with a comment on active learning spaces. Dr. Ravello?
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to be here. I want to tell you that for the nine students that are here tonight, historical, because they have never done anything like this in front of such a distinguished audience. If there are a little nervous, just praise them. It will get over. But I would like to tell you about this active learning. Last year during the Hilton Hotel hosted the Women Shelter event about abuse. We decided with the class, it was a Texas government class, to illustrate abuse in a way that is not grotesque, but it's more about data and it's about facts. And the facts, we can address them nice-looking, but the reality is still there. So that's one project last year. A second project that we did during the summer has to do with illustrating a cigar box. So you know Cuban cigars, we take the Cuban cigars out and we do a political thing inside. So one of the things that the students did was to talk about the Texas agricultural industry. And then this semester, we have done one called Fake News. So all the stories that we do relate to the atmosphere that we are living. So to start with the first student, I would like to invite Ms. Megan Hunter. Ms. Hunter, she worked on this project about, began three weeks ago, and she's going to give you a taste of fake news on her own version. So let me...
A commercial that we saw during the Super Bowl was, it's the most intriguing commercial I've ever seen. It was beautiful, actually, and oil is art, oil is life, let's power America. Let's do all these things with oil, and it was mesmerizing. And there were 100 million people approximately watching the Super Bowl. And so how many people saw this commercial? It was, when I first saw it, I was intrigued, but I was shocked. So what this project is to us is, one side is what we feel like that commercial represented. It says, "We welcome oil, oil is life, oil is beauty, oil is art." So this is what we feel like the commercial portrayed to the 100 million people watching the Super Bowl. And then the other side is what we feel could be a reality and has been a reality with the BP oil spill into the ocean. I think what, you know, we see... Sorry. Wasn't prepared. Trying to get it out without burning my hand. This is dry ice, by the way, nothing. So this is what we presented to the class. So the pollution that it presents, the, all the things that we don't see, that you can't see, that are in the atmosphere. And our main thing was, the reason we called Oil is Life, because whether it's this life or it's this life, oil is life. And so that was, that was the reason we named it that. Because regardless of the reality, so we did, this was our fake news. We felt that this was propaganda. We felt this was not giving the facts of oil and what the issues are with oil. And it made it glamorous, and so we felt that that was fake news. And so we found a lot of our facts on energy.gov and a lot of facts on doSomething.org to go green, to find other means to power America.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter.
I would like to invite now Ms. Carla Sample, and she's going to brief us on her project about domestic violence. So Ms. Sample, and she participated at the event last year. So let me bring the mannequin to the front.
Hello, my name is Carla Sample from TCC South Campus. Can you hear me? Oh yeah, I can hear me now. Oh, right here, okay. Oh, one of the legs. Yeah, just slide it on there. Yeah, just slide it on there. Story of my life, missing a leg, I tell you. Okay, this is Lola. It's called Reflection of Verbal Abuse. Lola represents one of the many childrens in our society that suffer, suffers from verbal abuse in the home. Her parents both experienced verbal abuse through their childhood, and because the wounds were so deep, that they passed them on to their daughter. And with such words such as, "You're the problem, you're stupid," which left Lola with low self-esteem and shattered image. Now that she's grown from childhood to adulthood, she has to make a choice on whether to turn her back on what she was raised on or to move forward and go past it. Her face, well, y'all can see the face, but, can you turn it a little bit? Her face has, thank you. I'm the only one from my team, so I don't have any assistance. Okay, her face, the normal person that looks into a mirror sees their whole face. But Lola, because she suffered from verbal abuse, doesn't see that. So that's why we had the broken glass to resemble her shattered image. She also reflects three birds. The yellow bird, which stands for hope and happiness. There's two red birds, one of them is either, one represents extreme love, and red also represents extreme violence. And she also has a white bird too, that symbols of safety and innocence and purity. The three birds, they also represent the statistic that children of domestic violence are three times more likely to repeat the cycle in their adulthood as grow up in domestic violence, and most significant predator of whether or not someone would engage in domestic violence later in life. We got our statistics from cdv.org. Also, I want to explain her shirt. The clothing that she has on has a white shirt up under it, which, raise the shirt up a little bit. I don't know if y'all can see it, probably. It has the white shirt underneath the black shirt. It's the writing showing the first word, the words are not visible until you get up close to her to see where, when you walk through life, you can see I have on a black dress up under. You don't know what's been said to me throughout my childhood. So in the arm reaching out, it holds the yellow bird where she's trying to reach for hope and happiness. The dead side, which he's covering up, has the arm and the yellow, I'm sorry, and the white bird on it, showing where she lost her purity and innocence. And the purple skirt represents domestic violence color. And if you turn on the back, the back of the body has the line drawn down the middle to represent that she can choose not to pass these words on to her children, or she could follow in her parents' footsteps and continue the ones.
I would like now to invite Gabrielle Dell, Ms. Hendrick, and Genovela Benavides. And also, I would like to acknowledge Ms. Baker, is the mother of one of the students here tonight. here tonight. Thank you for being with us, Ms. Baker. And this project is about fake news and the power of the internet that present us with two faces, one that is the fake face, and the other one is the facts. So the students have made an illustration of that concept.
Boy, Mr. Ravello was right. This isn't really what we expected, and I am a little nervous. But anyways, we'll proceed. Good evening. As you said, my name is Gabriel. These are my two partners, Juvenella and Danielle. Would like to start by thanking you first for taking this time to observe our presentation. As you said, our presentation was on fake news, and to take that away, I'd like to invite Ms. Juvenella here.
We, the students of Mr. Ravello's art history class, were assigned a project on the topic of fake news and how it affects us. My partners and I thought it most effective to take the general approach of social media.
We started with the idea of a computer monitor. And the globe here represents a computer monitor, and not only that, but the world wide web. The continents on the globe represents the Facebook or social media apps. And...
Okay, we, at the front of the globe, we have the symbol of like, but the K, if you notice, it's hidden. And that's just to represent what the reality, what they show us. On the back, we have the actual Facebook like, which just shows what the social media wants us to see. We decided to create the desk out of cardboard, just to show a weak foundation of facts.
Yeah, as you can see on the keyboard, or if you look closely, it is missing some keys. This represents, this is on purpose, I see you laughing. This is on purpose, like I said, it, we've taken away, just the same way that social media takes away from us, the ability to search for what is real, the truth, as you can see. So the T, the U, the R, the U, or, I'm sorry, facts, the F, A, C, T, and S, as well as enter, have all been taken away, removing that, removing that capability from us.
So today I want to emphasize is that the continents have been replaced by the logos of the social media, like Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, so all of, are made into continents.
Right, that's what makes up the world. To reiterate what Danielle said, the K is missing, showing that, that the power lies in the hands of social media. What they choose to allow us to see doesn't dictate what we look up, but that's what we see.
And Danielle, you made the globe, too.
Yes, yes, sir.
I was impressed that she didn't buy it, but she made it herself, so.
Yeah, it was pretty difficult, since I never did paper mache before, it was pretty difficult. But, I mean, it turned out good.
Okay, we have one last presentation by Ms. Sandate, Crystal Sandate, Justin Troncelito, and Mr. Joshua Jones. And what they are doing is comparing two cities, Arlington and Bedford?
Burleson.
And Burleson, about food deserts, and liquor stores, and convenience stores, and grocery stores.
Hope y'all have a good night tonight. Sorry, I'm getting through the traffic. In this model, we compare the two Texas cities of Burleson and Arlington. They are quite different in their overall population, physical area, poverty rates, and income. We compare this data to analyze how this affects the increasing hunger rates in Texas. The model presented shows the number of grocery stores, convenience stores, and liquor stores in their prospective cities. And what we were doing was, we compare how the location of all these different stores at different points relate to each other.
So we took all the data, and then we looked up for all the stores for, see where they were mostly located, and kind of averaged it out to see where stores are more popular, or where they are more popular compared to wherever the convenience stores, just simple stores that people don't have access to the food that's simpler, and also compared to liquor stores, because that also relates to the crime rate and all that of the other statistics.
Any questions?
This is from the Texas government class. Obviously, we are addressing a local Texas, North Texas issue. Data-driven.
To conclude, as you can see, these are group projects. Now I'm gonna show you single projects, but it's still about engaging with data. And these are cigar boxes without the Cuban cigars. And what they have inside are illustrations, illustrations of data. For instance, we have one, which is about agriculture in Texas. And as you can see, inside the box, there is a farm. There is a farm. And here you have all the data associated with the economic impact of this industry in Texas. But again, they use, they visualize the industry. And then in this case, another student from, obviously from Texas A&amp;M, he took the class summer one, he did the war with Mexico. And what he did, he did all the research, and you can see all the links of the data that is explaining inside, like the cost of the wall, the logistics, all that. And then inside, he had President Trump giving his speech. So again, these are just students' interpretations using data. And what I value, value on this is the creativity. And I always give them the parameters, be nice, be classy, you know? Be polite, but just put it in there. So I wanna thank you for your time, and I hope you enjoy this presentation.
Thank you, and to all the students, too, please.
Yes.
Thank you, Carlos, appreciate that. And I want to conclude here by talking about learning spaces. Active learning strategies work best in active learning spaces. I'm gonna play this video, it's a minute long, there's no sound, and I'm gonna talk while I play it, if I hit the right button, that is. This is made by a company called Steelcase. They make classroom furniture for the active classroom, or something that's called the learning studio. And what you'll notice, first of all, about the learning studio and the class, and the furniture within the class, the learning studio, is that it is moving. Everything is on wheels, and it moves around, and the teacher can configure the classroom any way that she or he wants to. And what usually happens in an active classroom is that more than one pedagogies are employed in any one class period. So a teacher can on a dime change the dynamics of the classroom and keep the students actively involved at all times. Another feature of the learning studio is that there is no front of the room. If you'll notice, on the pictures that I showed you earlier, there was always a distinctive front of the room, the teacher was talking down to the students in the militaristic rows. But here, all the students are actively engaged in the front row, in the spotlight, at all times, working, working together, working individually also. And you'll see as this video concludes, and as it started, it's in the lecture format. Now, I'm not saying that the lecture format is evil, and it should be done away with, but there are parameters to it. You should not do it for an entire class period, shouldn't do it for an extended amount of time, because data indicates, and Dr. Jordan is an assistant, that whatever we come up with has to be supported by data and evidence. Data indicates that people's attention span in the lecture format drops off dramatically at about 12 minutes. And so you don't want to lecture more than 10 minutes. That's what I always tell, tell faculty members, not more than 10 minutes here. So yes, you can use a lecture format to get ideas out, but then actively engage the students. I'd like to bring the example of Steelcase also, because the South Campus just got done, finished with a grant that we submitted to Steelcase for $65,000 in order to retrofit a lecture classroom into a learning studio. We would be committed, when we get this grant, not if we get this grant, but when we get this grant, to doing two years of research for Steelcase, which would be research that undoubtedly would indicate that students learn better in, in learning studios and in traditional lecture classrooms. And I want to thank Jackie Mackey and her crew for helping with this project, and Margaret Lutton, and Patty Bass, as well in facilities. It was, it was a group, group activity. And finally, active learning initiatives coming up this next year on the South Campus. Next fall, we are going to be opening a center for active teaching and learning on campus. It's a foreign and a physical space for faculty. It's run by faculty, in which they can come in and share best practices, give workshops in which they can do active research, and they can experiment with the highest level state-of-the-art instructional technology. Also, we are going to declare on the South Campus, next year is going to be the year of active learning. Starting with our first week-back activities in August, and continuing through the week-back, first week-back activities in January, we're gonna be inviting nationally noted speakers on active learning onto the campus. And throughout the year, we're gonna be encouraging faculty to give workshops also of what they're doing actively in the classroom, and how it can be adapted in other disciplines as well. And I've also gotten into a discussion with faculty at the, our ISDs in our area, too, to encourage high school faculty members to take, take part of that. So that's something we're looking forward to, very much so, in the next year. So I think I have gone over my 12-minute limit here, and your attention spans are probably under the table right now, but I'm just asking if you have any questions, or if you want to make any comments at this point, of me, or of the students, or Dr. Ravello.
The active learning is something I'm very familiar with, because we do it in our Rotary training. But do you have any data as to the net results? I mean, are students getting better grades, more completion, et cetera? It's, it's obvious it's a good program, but do you have any specific data?
Yeah, absolutely, and there's, there's a lot of data out there. As a matter of fact, one of my favorite studies was done at North Carolina State University. And they did a five-year study of students in active classrooms and students in lecture classrooms. And they disaggregated the information afterwards, and they found out that, as far as success rates, students who get ABs and Cs, African-American students did 10% better than they did in lecture classrooms. Women did 15% better. But they found out that Hispanic students, they didn't know what to do with the information, because they found out in five years, there was not one Hispanic student that got a D or an F, or withdrew from an active learning studio there. So that's one of my favorite stories to tell, but there is, there is a lot of data and evidence, and I said, when we get this grant, we're gonna be committed to doing two years of data, of research ourselves on active learning.
Yeah, excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to thank the students and Dr. Ravello, or Mr. Ravello, for bringing them out. We did a really good job, and again, applause for all of you. Thank you. So the question I was gonna ask you is, what, you know, what kind of prompted this, this direction, you know, for this, for this particular, what, I guess, what was it that inspired Dr. Ravello or Mr. Ravello to take, to take this initiative with this class?
I know that when you work with your intellect, with your energy, with your hands, when you create things, and you, and you are data-driven, you tend to absorb the knowledge in a different manner.
Right.
Because I can talk about domestic violence as a social issue that we need to pay attention, but once they engage in producing something, they are trying to connect the dots, as you could see with Ms. Sample's presentation. The second element is to allow them to collaborate across, which is important, you know, students tend to isolate themselves. Like this project, I mean, this is a combination of three minds.
Yes.
And for me, that's key to get them engaged. And the fact is that a project like this has the same significance than passing an exam, because this, they retain this information.
Absolutely.
And the fact that they are here tonight, without extra credit, there is no extra credit tonight. That reflects, that reflects, you know?
Understanding the commitment.
Yes, because, you know, I know they have responsibilities.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Can we take a picture with them? Can we take a picture?
Thank you, trustees, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to reports of continued success.
Can we take a picture? Can we take a picture? Can I believe? Does anybody have a?
I think Glenn is out there with them. Is Glenn out there with them?
Can we just get the dog?
Oh, yeah. Forgot somebody. You can leave Lola. I think she should get a picture.
Leave it here?
Put it right in the middle. We're gonna get a picture of Glenn. Okay. We're just getting close. We're getting close. Kind of have to cluster up. That was great. Yes, we're so embarrassed. I think so.
On three. One, two, three. One more.
Thank you.
Where did Glenn go? He was here, our photographer, he was here. Thank you, safe trip home. We'll, we'll continue with the agenda. Committee reports, audit and finance, Mr. Carter.
The Audit Committee hasn't met, I think we talked earlier about, we had individually, we reviewed a, an audit of our audit system, but we haven't met to discuss the finance yet.
Okay. The Governance Committee did meet, and I always try to use this as an opportunity for an infomercial for anyone in the audience who's new. If, it seems that we raced through the items without much discussion or consideration. We have seen the draft, we have met and reviewed the draft agenda and the substantive information on each item, so we've already had some discussion and continue, can continue that at these meetings, but we have had a briefing, if you will. So this is the next item, having said that, we have not, but I would ask Mr. Tom Carr to come forward and present the order adopting polling locations. As you know, we will be having an election in May, and Mr. Carr is our specialized attorney in the matter of elections.
Thank you, President Appleman, Chancellor, members of the board, good to see y'all again. Just a quick note, because of the procedures of this board and the state laws that are in effect, we're presenting you this, this resolution this evening. Next board meeting in March, there will be another resolution identifying or captivating the idea that two of our trustees will be elected, because there, there's no opposition, they're running unopposed. And so we will trim down our resolution at that time, so that only District III will be up for election, and only those polling places associated with District III will be listed. However, state law requires us to, to follow this process, and so I will present the, the resolution to the board, and actually, I guess I will, will read the resolution to the board, and at the conclusion, I will recommend its adoption. Board of Trustees, Tarrant County College District, order adopting polling locations And whereas said order called for the election of trustees, however, polling locations for Election Day and early voting locations were not available at the time the order was adopted. They have now been provided by the Tarrant County Elections Administrator accordingly. Be it resolved and ordered by the Board of Trustees of the Tarrant County College District, that in accordance with the general laws of the Legislature of the State of Texas pertaining to the election of trustees, the Board does hereby adopt the early voting times, dates, and locations, and selects those places identified and listed on the attached Order of Election, which is made a part of this resolution and order. As the polling locations for single-member districts Four, Five, and Three, said locations will serve as precincts and polling places for those voters in the Tarrant County election precincts, which are assigned to said polling places for the May 6, 2017, Tarrant County College District trustee elections, and any runoff if necessary. Be it further resolved and ordered, that the attached Revised Order of Election is hereby adopted by this Board. Shall I read the Order of Election? No. Good.
Motion to approve. Mr. Green, seconded by Mr. Carter. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11. Consideration and Approval of Contract with Muckleroy and Falls for Construction Services for Space Renovation to Relocate Staff to District Multipurpose Center in the Amount of $4,860,745. Motion to approve. Second. Dr. Patrick, seconded by Mr. Greenhill. Discussion?
And I might add, Board had asked us in a previous meeting about the utilization of this facility. You'll see on the slide on the left, that is the overall facility with the additional property to the north that we purchased, and it's about an eight-to-10-minute drive due west of the Northeast Campus, if you go to the second slide. And this projects the current thinking for the utilization of that space, the green area of real estate facilities, the district warehouse, and some of the area in the back. All of that is the initial with the yellow future use indicated.
Dr. Morrison?
Excuse me. For the record, please note, I don't think it's working. For the record, please note that I ask that we have staffing in place, such that anyone walking into the facility could get information about any of the services that TCC offers so that they wouldn't have to be redirected to another site, but it could have access to a person and certain computers that would avail them of all that information.
Yes, ma'am.
Also, in our, I had it on.
Sorry, I can see.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Appleman.
Helpful, Hannah.
In our governance meeting, we discussed, you know, this is a lot of money, but considering the addition of this money plus the acquisition cost, it's, the total amount comes in less than what the appraisal might be, the real value of the property, as I understand it?
Yes, the, we purchased the building, as you may recall, for the 6.4 million, and if you add in the renovation costs and the improvements, it should definitely increase the value of the building, yes.
Yeah, but compared, if we were to go out and purchase the same building someplace, the comparison of those two prices, I think Ms. Petty said that it would be considerably less than what the cost.
Yes, that's correct. Yes, it would be, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? All those in favor of approving the contract with Muckleroy and Falls, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration and Approval of Job Order Contracting General Contractor Services Agreement with BaseCom Inc. to Provide Construction Services for Restroom Renovations on Northeast Campus in the Amount of $300,541.94. Motion to approve. Mr. Greenhill, seconded by Mr. Heath. Questions, comments?
Ms., yes, I'm going to be excusing myself from this particular vote.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Other questions or comments? All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? One abstention, Ms. Ayala. Item number 13. Consideration and Approval of Job Order Contracting General Contractor Services Agreement with BaseCom to Provide Construction Services for Explosion-Proof Hazardous Chemical Storage Units on Multiple Campuses in the Amount of $238,043.84. Motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Mr. Heath, seconded by Mr. Carter. Comments, questions? All those in favor, I. Any opposed? Motion carries. With one abstention, Ms. Ayala. Item number 14. Consideration and Approval of Job Order Contracting Construction Trade Services Agreement with Fort Worth Electric to Install Previously-Purchased Interior LED Fixtures for Multiple Buildings on South Campus in the Amount of $388,907. Motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Mr. Heath, seconded. Ms., Dr. Patrick. Comments, questions? All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 15. Consideration and Approval of Bi-Board Cooperative Agreement with EnviroMatic Systems to Provide Equipment and Installation to Upgrade Building Automation Systems to Reliable Controls for the Criminal Justice Building on Northwest Campus in the Amount of $206,391.62. Motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Mr. Greenhill, seconded by Mr. Heath. Is that okay? Any questions or comments? All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 16. Consideration and Approval of Award Bid and Purchase Office and Classroom Furniture from Selected Vendor Resellers for the Next Year in an Amount Not to Exceed $3,250,000. Motion to approve. Dr. Patrick, is that you? Second, Mr. Carter. Questions, comments? All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 17. Consideration and Approval of Award Bid and Purchase Office and Classroom Furniture from Selected Vendor Resellers for the Next Year in an Amount Not to Exceed $3,250,000. Motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Mr. Heath, seconded. Ms., Dr. Patrick. Comments, questions? All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 15. Consideration and Approval of Bi-Board Cooperative Agreement with EnviroMatic Systems to Provide Equipment and Installation to Upgrade Building Automation Systems to Reliable Controls for the Criminal Justice Building on Northwest Campus in the Amount of $206,391.62. Motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Mr. Greenhill, seconded by Mr. Heath. Is that okay? Any questions or comments? All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 16. Consideration and Approval of Award Bid and Purchase Office and Classroom Furniture from Selected Vendor Resellers for the Next Year in an Amount Not to Exceed $3,250,000. Motion to approve. Dr. Patrick, is that you? Okay. Second, Mr. Carter. Questions, comments? All those in favor, aye. Motion carries. We were really easy on you.
Please go. Thank you very much.
Item number 17. Consideration and Approval of Novation Cooperative, sorry, Agreement with GE Healthcare to Purchase LOG-IQS7 Ultrasound System in the Amount of $199,826,000. Motion to approve.
So move.
Mr. Greenhill, seconded by Mr. Heath and Mr. Michael Herndon, and we'll present or answer questions if you have.
Be happy to.
No? All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Herndon. Item number 18. Consideration and Approval of Contract with Integrated Computer Solutions for an Integrated Public Safety Solution in an Amount Not to Exceed $319,819. Motion to approve. Mr. Heath.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Ayala. Questions, comments? Ms. Robinson is available to answer those.
This is our blue phone system again?
No, this is different from our blue phone system. This is an update of our current records management system in our.
That's right.
All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Monthly Financial Report. Dr. McLendon?
Good evening. Financials for January 2017. We are in the fifth month of our fiscal year, so we review all revenue and expenses that are greater than 50%, and so 5/12ths is equal to 42%. When we look at our total revenue is, as expected, it's just slightly above from what we had last year. It was 67% last year, and right now it's sitting on 71%. Okay? So, let's go to expenses, okay? So we will look at all expenses which are greater than 50%, which were not discussed at last month's, as a prepaid or BPO. So Finance and I have reviewed all our expenses that are greater than 50% and have nothing to highlight. Our overall expenses are 48% versus a number of 42, an actual of 42%, but if, when we take into account our prepaids, encumbrances, and benefit, we feel that they're within range, okay? Investments, all right, our pools. So we have an increase in our pools of 49.3 mil, all right? When we look at our short-term, we purchased two 20-million term, so we have an increase of total of 40 mil. When we look at our U.S. securities, we bought a, we had a maturity of $10 million for the Federal National Mortgage Association. We also purchased another $10 million from the Federal Farm Credit Bank, so giving us a total balance of 110.7, and our total portfolio is at 349.7. When we try to compare how we do, we're looking at a yield. I'm sorry. Okay, okay, so we have a yield, a spread of 24, which is comparing 90 against a T-bill of .66. When we look at our WAM, it's 325 versus a 365, and that is because we received a lot more money in the month, and so it's pushing that number down. Any questions? Petty, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. McLendon.
Dr. Giovinini?
Dr. Gobin.
Thank you, Dr. Giovinini, Mrs. Appleman, and members of the Board. I am pleased to introduce to you some new staff members at Northeast Campus. Come on up, we have three. Fred Schmidt is recently appointed as our Assistant to the President. Many of you know Fred, but a few of you may not, and I'd like to tell you a little bit about his background. Fred served as the Director of Program Development for Community and Industry Education right here at Tarrant County College. He led strategic initiatives for workforce development training and projects to create career pathway models with stackable credentials focused on career entry and leading to employment. Fred began his work at TCC as an adjunct instructor for corporate services, and helped build the Certified Logistics Technician Programs, and served as the MSSC Master Trainer, certifying new instructors throughout the United States. He also has background in grants, serving as a coordinator overseeing grant-funded opportunities, writing proposals, and administering awarded grant funds. Fred has over 15 years of experience in the manufacturing, supply chain, and logistics field. At Motorola, Fred progressed from supervisor to production and project manager, and that was in, if I pronounce this correctly, Boynton Beach, Florida. He was also a member of the Six Sigma Implementation Team and led projects to develop operations in Mexico and Ireland. Fred was selected as a project manager to relocate the Motorola North American Fulfillment Center to Fort Worth in Alliance, Texas. He moved to Texas then, accepting the position of Operations Manager of the North American Fulfillment Center. Within this role, Fred made significant cost reduction and inventory control improvements, including activating the site as a foreign trade zone. Fred completed his associate degree at Indian River Community College, so he is a community college success story, a bachelor of science degree from the University of Central Florida, and he's near completion of a master's degree from the University of South Dakota. Fred is also a certified program planner and certified e-marketing professional through Learning Resources Network, also known as LEARN. Would you please join me in welcoming Fred Schmidt?
Thank you, Dr. Gobin. Chancellor, Madam President, Board of Trustees, I'm very honored to have this opportunity. I'd like to acknowledge some folks who have traveled with me from Corporate Solutions, who couldn't see me, who wanted to see me off tonight, and I appreciate them, and I appreciate Dr. Gobin, and especially the Northeast team, for their gracious welcome of me as I join their team and integrate into a lot of great things that are happening at that campus, so.
Congratulations, Fred. Best wishes for continued success.
Congratulations. You'll be sorely missed at the workforce development.
I think I might stay a little bit involved.
Stay involved.
We'll check with Dr. Gobin on that.
I keep forgetting to delete his name from my go list.
No.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, and I appreciate all the support that I've had from all of the Board members. Over the last four years especially, I've gone from an individual contributor back to working with a close team, and that's why I appreciate the Corporate Solutions team being here tonight, because while I was an individual contributor, they stuck with me and were kind of my foundation, so I definitely appreciate all that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Fred. And like all the team at Northeast Campus, Fred will stay plugged in and very engaged with and supportive of all of our district-wide efforts, so his background across the district makes him a tremendous asset for the entire team. We also have one, and this is one that actually slipped by, and I take full responsibility for that. I didn't know the routine of introducing folks when this gentleman first joined us, and then I learned about it a little bit later, and so we wanted to bring him in and introduce him formally to you, although many of you may have met him already. Victor Byasteros joined TCC as the Director of Student Development Services on Northeast Campus. In this role, he's responsible for guiding, developing, and monitoring programs and services for Student Development Services, the Office of Health Services, the Student Center, and the Office of Student Activities. This includes campus activities, multicultural programming, leadership development, student government association, student organizations, and new student orientation. Prior to TCC, Victor worked at two institutions in the DFW area, and the majority of his 22-year career in higher ed has been in student affairs, with some experience in enrollment management. During his time at TCC, he has been involved on various committees and task forces. He served as a mentor in the Men of Color Mentoring Program. Mr. Byasteros earned his bachelor's and graduate degrees at Dallas Baptist University. He and his wife recently celebrated their 22nd anniversary and have two daughters, and Victor has really just become an indispensable member of our campus leadership team. Please welcome Victor Byasteros.
Dr. Giovinini, Ms. Appleman, thanking distinguished Board members for allowing me to be here. It's my pleasure to be part of the TCC community and partnering with the family that we have to solicit support and continue to support our students into student success for the goals that they may have. I tell students all the time that nothing can change your life as much as an education, and we hope to encourage them and support them in that and encourage that student success. So look forward to continuing our work with you, and thank you for your continued support.
Thank you.
It is also a pleasure to introduce Martin Pham as our new TCC Northeast Director of Student Recruiting. His former positions include academic advisor, and it's very important to us that as we do our outreach and recruiting and onboarding work with students, that we anchor that as an outreach of our advising model, and we help advise students as they come into the college. We were fortunate, I guess, to steal Martin from Southeast Campus somewhere along the way when he became an advisor on North. way when he became an advisor on Northeast. He had been an associate in the Testing Center on Southeast Campus, and so he has a really great background with some different areas of helping students. He assisted with various recruitment activities such as the Northeast Campus Community Showcase and Senior Preview Day. Martin is very actively involved in a variety of district-wide and campus committees and task teams. This includes the Men of Color Mentoring Program, the Chancellor's Emerging Leaders Program, and he began his education right here at Tarrant County College on Northeast Campus in the summer of 2004, and he earned an Associate of Arts Degree at TCC. He earned his Bachelor's of Business Administration in Management at the University of Texas at Arlington, and his Master's Degree from Amberton University in Business Administration with a specialization in Strategic Leadership in 2015. I got to tell you too, that when we were interviewing for this particular position, we started off with the idea that this person has to have an it factor. They have to be that shining light that draws others into them, and if you lined up a thousand people anywhere, the one that would have the brightest shining light, or one of the brightest shining lights, would be Martin Pham. So, please join me in welcoming Martin Pham as our Director of Student Recruiting.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to thank Ms. Appleman, Dr. Giovinini, and the distinguished board members for your service and everything that you do for the college. As Director of Student Recruiting at the Northeast Campus, one of my goals is to help TCC be recognized as the first choice for higher education. In serving this great community, I want to ensure that all have access to quality education and are positioned for success. I'd like to thank Dr. Gobin, Dr. Delatéao for this honor, as I'm very excited for the opportunities that lie ahead and await for me in this new role, so have a nice night.
Thank you so much. That concludes our staff introduction.
Thank you. As you can see from almost two pages of single-spaced items, our chancellor has been busy getting acquainted and getting involved in not only our community at Tarrant County College, but outside our many neighbors and partners. And you may begin to hear some of the board members and some of the faculty and staff have gotten involved in a Rotary Project. It's a competition, if you will, of the Rotary, downtown Rotary Clubs looking for a project, and so some of us have been involved in a literacy reading effort initiative, and we're going to be voted on here pretty soon. And then another group has been involved with City's Literacy Reading Project, which is about to probably adopt a summer model program in the near Southeast community. We recently, and I think, Gina, you have a photo of us receiving a very nice check from the North Texas Specialty Physicians Group for doing some job training for them. Two hundred and eighty-four thousand, am I remembering right? Should have written it down. Anyway. Pardon me? Two forty-eight. Two forty-eight. Got my numbers turned around. Very nice grant, and several of us were there to meet and greet and thank them. Mr. Heat and Mr. Greenhill and Dr. Giovinini and Mr. Gates went to Austin to Community College Days. Many of our students joined them, and I believe they're going to tell us a little bit about that.
This is one of the neatest things that we do every year, is to go down and advocate for community colleges with our Texas Legislature. Of course, we see them up here as well, but it's a totally different thing when you get down there in Austin and you see them in their, in their offices. It means more to them when you go down there, make that effort. But more importantly, and I think Bill and I agree on this, it's, what's really neat is to see the students interacting with the legislator, legislatures, because they want to hear the students' stories. And all the ones that I visited, we encouraged each student to tell his or her story to the legislator, and that makes all the difference. I mean, they understand basics about, all the good things that community colleges do for students in the state of Texas, but what they do for each individual student provides that little extra pizzazz that'll help them go the extra mile to give us the funding and support that we need as community colleges.
Ms. Greenhill, do you want to add to that?
Yes, this was the most exciting thing for me as well, is being with the students. You saw a picture of me talking to one of the students, and he was, he is interested in law school, and so I'm going to try to connect with him at some point in the future. A very interesting thing that happened was, for example, that Dr. Giovinini and I were waiting to see Charlie Guerin, who is our representative in the House of Representatives in my district, and Ramon Romero walked down the hall, and Dr. Giovinini did a very, very good job lobbying for a, something that we're interested in and said the same thing to Charlie Guerin, so I'm very proud of our chancellor in his first efforts in our Capitol Building in Austin. We also had some meetings of our CCATT group advocacy. The point of all this is, not only for the students, but your trustees and the, are actively involved in advocating for community colleges in its best interest. Their best interest.
Let me add one more thing, and that, the state, you know, we, there's just so much of the pie, that's all the income that the state has, there's a small slice that they have that's actually discretionary, and so it's important for us to fight for our share of that each and every year. This year, the state's getting four percent less funding than they would normally get because of the loss of revenues from the oil and gas industry, but the proposal is only to cut our funding by point four percent, so they realize the importance of community colleges to the economy of the state of Texas.
Thank you.
And of course, just one more, we have to thank everybody who's involved in getting the students down there. You can see Bill Ace is in the middle of it. He's retired, of course. I don't, Bill's not here, but thank everybody for a job well done.
And four trustees, and Dr. Giovinini and Mr. Gates again, went to Washington, D.C. for the Association of Community College Trustees National Legislative Summit, and they're going to give us a brief report on those three four days. Dr. Patrick is our lead.
This is my first opportunity to go to Washington, D.C. on behalf of Tarrant County College. I have to tell you that as we met with the different representatives, congressmen and men, our story was easy to sell. They all know about the great work going on at Tarrant County College, so it was really very rewarding. I think we were very well-received and went to a number of offices in the Tarrant County delegation, including Senator John Cornyn, who spoke with us at a meeting, and also Representative Joe Barton, Representative Kay Granger, Representative Roger Williams, and Mark Veezy as well. So, it was a very productive day, as we were able to tell them about our priorities, because obviously there are a lot of needs that the college has, but to particularly emphasize with them the things that meant the most. And again, I, we felt very encouraged about the reception that we received and their understanding of our needs, and so it was a great, great trip.
Ms. Ayala?
I think we had an order that's...
Oh, okay, y'all. Who's next?
We were going to talk about PELs. I'm going after them.
Oh, yes. It was a very short conversation in regard to what our priorities are, one of which is, of course, the PEL Grants System, and to, you know, don't bother with it, and just keep the way it is. There is, there's a, there's a very large surplus in the PEL Grant System right now, and the message was, please take, please let it alone and reinvest in the, that's a picture of Senator Cornyn, and he really, he spent thirty minutes with us at least, and he knows about community colleges, and the PEL Grants, that was probably the biggest message that we gave, and some other messages in relating there, relating there too.
Finished?
You're finished? Okay. Besides seeking support for the PEL Grant, we also asked them to consider, we advocated for support for human capital in the, in the area of infrastructure projects and things like that. As you know, we have, for example, here, the Trinity River Vision that's going on, so we asked them that any time there's opportunities that come available where there's, there's a chance for us to get some, invest in some projects for this area, particularly for North Texas, that we encourage them to do so, because that in turn would help our economy. It also would help us with bringing more businesses here, and then we in turn would be able to put some of our students to work. So, we also asked, reached out and invited all of our representatives to come for a visit here at Tarrant County College. Some of them are actually making arrangements to visit at some point in time, so, you know, we, going forward, I think that we will continue to have a strong dialogue with them. The chancellor spoke very, very well about the college, of course, and everyone advocated, so it was a really good, good experience. And I think overall, that, at least from my perspective, I think that education is something that doesn't matter what side of the fence that you sit, everybody supports education, and they know the, the impact that we make here at TCC.
Yeah, I think every, every federal legislator that we talked to really has a good grasp on what community colleges do for the country, and we had some great speakers, we had panelists and so forth, that discussed various issues. One of the more interesting was Chuck Todd, who is the moderator for Meet the Press and the NBC News Coordinator, and his take, of course, he's a political junkie, and so he gets into everything, and he tries to keep everything level. You know, we all, I think, think different things about, you know, his bent, but, but he stressed the importance of hope. As Teresa said, you know, we've got to work with Republicans, we've got to work with Democrats, we've got to work with everybody, and that's, we're out to promote the mission of community colleges and TCC, and that was the thing. And he said, I have a lot of hope. We know there's a lot of change going on. Things are not going to be the same. They're going to be a lot different, but he still has a lot of hope that we will accomplish the things that are important to our country. And then, kind of as a surprise, I don't know that it was originally planned, but the speaker on Thursday morning was Betsy DeVos, who is the new Director of Education, the Secretary of Education, and we found out the day before, and there was some negative stuff, I think there was a lot of concern about her speaking in front of our group, but she got up there, and let me tell you, she gave the most incredible speech. I mean, I don't know if she wrote the speech, but whoever wrote that speech knew community colleges. I mean, they nailed every single point that is important to community colleges, and from that mostly negative audience, she got a rousing standing ovation from all the people that were there. So, it was, it was a short speech, but very much to the point. In fact, I have a copy of that speech. Reg, if anybody would like to see that, they can, you can hand that out to them, but it was outstanding and very, very moving for all of us. So, there is hope.
I'd like to make one side comment on that, is that in my, in my view, she is a tabula rasa, a clean slate in regard to our educate, to community college education. When she mentioned, and this Roberto Zarate, who is, who is Alamo Colleges, started talking to her, and when he starts talking to you, you listen about community colleges, and he told her about early college high schools, and she mentioned that, and she said, I just, I just learned about early college high schools, and I think this is a wonderful idea. She is someone that we can work with and teach maybe, and work with her for our success.
Yeah, one of the other things that we do at these conferences, particularly this one, I was chair of a nominating committee, there's five nominating committees representing the different areas of our country, and we selected candidates, or we recommended candidates for the Board of Directors for the National Association of Trustees, and we also selected a candidate or recommended a candidate for the Diversity Board. So, we had a group of people, all representing the Western District, and we interviewed the candidates and made our recommendation. So, that's a very, very important part of the legislative summit, and then they get elected, they get voted on in September.
Any other comments? Oh, Dr. Morrison?
If you haven't made plans to attend and participate in the Tuesday, February 28th, Diversity and Inclusion Event, that will be scheduled at the Hearst Conference Center from five to eight P.M. on Tuesday. You should plan to do so. Herman Boone, who is the football coach and motivator, that was the backdrop for the Remember the Titans movie, will be featured speaker. There'll probably be a few other surprises, so if you haven't signed up, please do so. Encourage your colleagues and cohorts to do so, and we'll look forward to seeing you there on February 28th, five to seven thirty P.M. at the Hearst Conference Center.
Thank you.
I just have one more. May I?
Yes.
This is, I want to make a shout-out to, to the Trinity Campus, and I made a, there was a, Sean, I made a talk to, what he did was to take a bunch of students out to dinner, and the theme was Thurgood Marshall, and there was a play that Dr. Madison took the kids to, not the kids, the students to, and we had the discussions, and I made a talk about my relationship with Thurgood Marshall and my family, because that, my dad was a, tried a case called Plessy versus Swetby Painter, but it was a very good event. It was a wonderful event and a good way to get the students together to talk about various things. Some of the stories, some of the lessons had to do with professionalism, how the lawyers were very professional with each other during a very, rather intense trial, but there's a picture of us. But anyway, it was a wonderful event, and a shout-out to Dr. Madison and his team for putting on that event. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Can I give one more plug? In case you haven't gone to Trinity River Campus, go to the beautiful Rotunda, and I think you all know I love that space, to see the, I'm sorry, to see the Fourth Annual Jewry Art Show that's sponsored by the Tarrant County Black Historical and Genealogical Society. There's some awesome artwork there from students of all ages. I think one of the top winners is actually affiliated with TCC as a student and a worker, so it's there through the 28th, so if you get a chance to go through, wander through that space, it's wonderful art. I know you'll enjoy it in the Rotunda of the TCC Trinity River Campus. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. We will go into closed session for deliberation of real property, Section 551.072, the Texas Government Code, deliberation on personnel matters, Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code, in consultation with the attorneys, Section 551.071, Texas Government Code. Please note that next month, our meeting is on the fourth Thursday of the month, because you are going to be on spring break the third week. So, thank you for joining us tonight, and we are temporarily adjourned.
Testing one-two test.[197.34]